Good and action, we're back on. Good evening, everyone, again. Welcome to our regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 4th, 2023, and we always start our council meeting, like many other meetings that we've had, with the invocation and then we lead to the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we have our neighbor and friend, Dan Zander, who will do the invocation, and we ask you all to stand and join us.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We pray for our council tonight, go smooth. And we just want to, it's Easter coming up for our families. We pray for that. And we just wanted to be with us all, and we wanted to get this done smoothly. So we just wanted to do that, Lord. And we thank you for this time. We love you and we care about you, Lord. And in our acts, we sing to thy name and pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, who joined in the invocation led by the Pledge of Allegiance from Dan Zander. Thank you again. We have our proclamation for Earth Day, which is April 22nd, 2023, that was put on here by our councilwoman, and she will be reading that tonight. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor. City of East Point proclamation, Earth Day, April 22nd, 2023. Whereas Earth Day, first celebrated in 1970, is an annual event celebrated around the world on April 22nd to demonstrate support for environmental protection and now includes events in more than 193 countries. And whereas we are reminded of the extraordinary importance of maintaining a clean and healthy environment. And whereas the global and local community face health crisis, food and water shortages, and economic challenges. And whereas all people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, have a right to a healthy, sustainable environment with economic growth and opportunity. And whereas Earth Day founder and former Senator Gaylord Nelson said, "Every person has the inalienable right to a decent environment." And whereas this year marks the 53rd anniversary of Earth Day. Now, therefore, we, the City Council for the City of East Point, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2023, as Earth Day. And that all the residents are urged to celebrate Earth Day through participation in activities and programs that will deepen their understanding of environmental protection and the need to create a healthier, safer, more sustainable, equitable future for all people. Proclaim this 4th day of April, 2023.
Thank you. Speaking of Earth Day, we will be doing our first citywide cleanup. At the, was it at the end of this month?
Yes, beautification has scheduled the cleanup for April 22nd, and then we are planning the Clean City Initiative to begin in May.
Okay, sounds good to me. And then also on here, we have our first East Point Excellent Award going to Monica Martinik. Did I say it correctly?
Yes.
Is she in the room? Oh, it's you! Oh, my God, I've been seeing you here for the longest. They're recognizing you today. You deserve it. Please stand up. All the council, you want to go give her this award?
Sure.
This is hard to do this way. So I'll start off. Monica is an employee here with the City of East Point. She began in 2006, so she's been here and has served in multiple departments within the city. We actually, after creating the process for the East Point Awards, had an appointed official that was on one of our commissions that actually called out to the City of East Point looking for some assistance and got ahold of Monica. So she gave incredible recognition to the way that Monica had handled her question. She was very knowledgeable, very supportive. Monica has been known to be very supportive of any of the employees that do come in, helping to train in new departments, and then also reaching out and reaching back to many other departments. One of the main things that she's found a passion with is our elections. So she has assisted with elections for many, many years, is very knowledgeable in elections. She works incredibly hard on the setup. I had the honor of working alongside of her and seeing how tough that process really is in setting up all of the precincts and absentee boards. So this is for you, Monica, from all of the council in recognizing and supporting your work and dedication to the City of East Point.
Thank you.
Speech.
No.
I'm going to take a photo with you.
My speech is "Thank You, Everybody." Sweet and short.
We can do it right here in the middle of all the councils so we can fill out our newsletter and things like that.
Yeah, and the newsletter.
Thank you for your service again, Ms. Monica Martinik. Very unique and beautiful name. We're going to go to our roll call. Good evening, Ms. Holdman.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Cobbunis?
Present.
Councilmember Curly?
Here.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Here.
Mayor Owens?
Here.
Approval of the agenda, council?
A move that we approve the agenda for tonight, Tuesday, April 4th, 2023?
Second. Motion in support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobbunis?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. The hearing of the public is now open. The hearing of the public, you get three minutes in the beginning, and you get three minutes closer to the end. Hearing of the public is now open.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm actually here this evening to speak on three different items. First, I'd like to start out with Memorial Day Parade special event application. If you guys have any questions when that comes up, I'll be here to answer them. I have served on that board for like the past like four or five years, so hopefully I'll be able to answer any questions that you have, if you do have any at that time. Also, if it is approved tonight, I want to make sure I invite all of council and the mayor out to the parade. If you guys want to participate, we usually all walk, pass out candy, things like that, you're all welcome to come. So, and your families, invite your families too. So, more the merrier. The second item I'd like to talk about is Item H, and that's the approval of the Emergency Medical Service and Transport Contract. Seems like a lot of money to hire an outside company to come into our city with, for that amount of money, I feel like we could hire like internally or maybe incentivize our fire department to maybe pick up the extra slack. I think that, I know we've been short-staffed over in our fire department, and I think that giving them the initiative for to try to recruit more employees to come here might help, and then we wouldn't even need that position. And then the last item I wanted to speak was the Teen Advisory Commission. And I wanted to speak on that because I know you guys wanted to be East Point residents, but I do feel like, you know, we have like our DDA here in the City of East Point, where businesses kind of come together because ultimately they have a vetted interest in our city, and I feel like the students at East Detroit High School also have a vetted interest in our community and that they should be part or be at least have the opportunity to be part of this committee. You know, about one-third of our district of East Point Public Schools does cover Warren. So even if they live within the school district boundaries, you're preventing them from being part of this commission, and I think they do ultimately all reflect our community, and I think that it would be an asset to, you know, any of them to expand it open to any of the students there. So I just wanted to kind of speak on that tonight. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Most of you know me. My name is Joe Zangara. I'm East Point Professional Firefighter, Local 1561, Union President.
Name is Scott Bale. I'm here on behalf of the Michigan Professional Firefighters Union. I'm the sixth vice president for our state union, represent City of East Point, also Field Service Rep for the International Association of Firefighters, also here to support the guys in East Point against Item H.
Jason Clark, member of Local 1561. Just here in support of President Zangara.
I'm here to speak in opposition of Agenda Item H and hope the council will oppose the city manager's recommendation. January 8th, the city received a quote from MedStar to provide one person in an SUV vehicle to roam around the city and assist their own MedStar ambulance for a price tag of $350,000. On January 20th, the union and city met to discuss different topics. With no knowledge of this proposal, the union made a good faith offer to the city to open the contract, allow the city to lower the hiring standards, and hire basic EMTs. Along with that, a medic incentive was requested for each member of the bargaining unit with the paramedic license. The incentive pay would have equated about $75,000, and that's about one-fifth of the money proposed by MedStar, and more than likely, we would have filled our vacancies with basic EMTs by now, and I wouldn't be standing here tonight. The city balked at that idea. For the record, the union had no and has no working knowledge of this potential agreement and has changes in our working conditions, which is a subject of bargaining. The fire department command staff has no working knowledge of this agreement or how it would affect the day-to-day operations within the fire department. The city and the union have begun formal negotiations. We met yesterday afternoon, and not a word of this was spoken from the city. This should have been mentioned, and I have to question if the city is not bargaining in good faith now. We feel our staffing shortages can be fixed at the negotiating table. We feel one major piece of the puzzle that is causing our staffing woes is an inferior pay and benefits package. Arguably, ours is the worst in the county. My understanding is that we have roughly seven applicants at this time. The union is willing to come together with the city and reach an agreement to get these individuals hired ASAP. As far as operations go, one guy in an SUV does nothing for our residents. The fire department already responds on all the high priority medical runs with two or three paramedics and a fire engine. Our focus should be getting firefighters hired so that we can fill the seats of the $2.2 million worth of vehicles we've recently purchased. I'm more than happy to make myself available for any of you anytime. Thank you.
Just one more thing to echo what President Zangara said is the price tag. I think that's what really the council should be focused on. $350,000 for a year for one person to run around in a SUV, if they're, hopefully they're available to respond. Whereas the money you could invest into your fire, full-time firefighters, adding positions to their staff and get two to three guys on a fire engine with a full complement of equipment and gear is a much better investment than $350,000 for one person. And I'll leave it at that. So bring it to the table, let the firefighters negotiate the best response, the best staffing, and the best services for their residents.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak at this time?
Good evening, council. Mary Hall Rayford, East Point. Couple of things that are really weighing me. One is the Teenage Advisory Council. I wrote most of you about it. Not that it's not a great idea, I just have a problem with eligibility. Because at the high school currently, there are 80% of the students are on the honor roll, which I think is a great achievement. And since we have so many, 54% of our students that are out of the city, it would be a shame to eliminate them from eligibility and participating in something that could benefit them for a lifetime. Another thing I wanted to talk about was, there's a word that says, "Be careful, refrain from the very appearance of evil." And if we can't do that, we're going to have a problem in the city. One of the things, as I watched the last half of the meeting from the last time, was some people have a problem talking about something that happened three-plus years ago. And yet, the same people wanted to talk about something that happened over 30 years ago and blame residents who are here now who had nothing to do with that for the existence of some discrimination. No one that I know denies that it happened. What we cannot, we should not blame others for things that they had nothing to do with. That is the height of hypocrisy. I'd love to see this city, our family town, start embracing one another for the character of the person, not the color of our skin, but the character. And if we cannot demonstrate great character in all aspects of our being, we have a problem. And notice, I didn't say I have a problem. I said we have a problem collectively. That's what we need to work towards and show the world what a great city we actually have. Thank you.
Anyone else at this time? Anyone else?
Yep, Karen Belts. Longtime East Point resident. For the record, the official record, I have never made any racial, discriminatory, derogatory, or untrue comments at this podium. I never assaulted the mayor of East Point. I have, however, voiced my concerns regarding this mayor's documented behaviors of the last three and a half years. I thought hearings of the public were an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Apparently, they are also opportunities for some to make very inappropriate remarks, false accusations, veiled threats, veiled threats to residents. Disagreements are to be expected, but these type of comments and veiled threats have no place at city council meetings.
Thank you. Anyone else at this time?
Madam Mayor, Council, Harvey Creach, resident of East Detroit for quite some time. That's why I said East Detroit, not East Point. When I first started in this city, its name was East Detroit, and it stilled me, it can be East Detroit. It doesn't have to be East Point. We're all the same people. I didn't go for the name change, but we did. So now it's East Point. So now that I already got that out, I'd like to talk to the council for some of us have been around for a long time. And the thing is, a lot of people say I talk too much about one thing. Well, the thing about it is, the only reason I talk about it is because we didn't finish it. And it didn't even get started. That's why I said before too, East Detroit or East Point. It's all the same thing. It's not going to change. New faces and different people. The city isn't going to change because that's why these people are here. They're looking not for a change, just to be subtle and be what it used to be. And that's all I'm looking for. People think I'm a deliberately pick-on. That's like right now, the Tiger Cats. I'm about to pick on them a little bit. I'm not picking on them, but I'm picking on the city for what they're using our parks and recreation for. The Tiger Cats, I've been with them all my life. I played for the Tiger Cats. But now the same thing. They have equipment in city buildings. In the city buildings that belong to the residents, we need the buildings for different things. I'm not going to tell them where to put their equipment, but it'd be the same thing about it. When they, when we don't use that building, there's two other places in there. The locker rooms, the rest of, they're empty. They can take that equipment, put it in locker rooms, in the building becomes a building again. It's the same as Spindler. We've got that building over there. We put all that money in. We put close to three-quarters of a million dollars in at Memorial. I don't know how much we put in at Spindler. The same thing about it. And we don't even use the buildings. I'm here to fight for the same thing. I'm here to fight for the city to use. We sold, or we more or less, I apologize. We didn't sell the senior citizens, but we have people that use the recreation center. Apparently, the city didn't think we needed it anymore. And we have a recreation center that we deal with Roseville, and a lot of people, either they don't want to go there, or in reality, I'm going to put it point-blank. It's a beautiful place to go. But guess what? They still don't offer our city the same thing. Our city doesn't keep up our baseball diamonds anymore. Our city doesn't really, they put some time in our parks, but not what they should. And the money, we talked to them, all I hear is we don't have the money. What happened to our city? What happened to our parks? I don't want to, I mean, it's a crying shame. Roseville is a city, and it's a great city. The recreation center is a great recreation center. What does East Point have for recreation, period? I want to bring it back, put it back, and see what this city can do. I mean, there's a lot of-
Time is up, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else at this time?
My name is Raymond Clayton, resident of East Point. Good evening, Mayor, council. I want to piggyback off the gentleman just talked about the parks. I'm really disappointed that we're not getting nothing done in Kennedy Park because it seems like all the parks are being expanded or getting parts put on them, and we got to wait till another grant is available till next year. Awesome opinion that's probably going to be discussed is about the teenagers working with the council. I agree that it should be residents only, and it'll probably be up for discussion later on. Dogs, again, out of control. Every day you read in the newspaper about dogs being out. Last night, I was in the city of Detroit, walked outside, went to my car, dogs running around. The problem is everywhere. It's not just here in East Point. It's everywhere. Another thing I want to say also, I don't know if people are aware that, I don't believe our property values have really written down because since 2000, there was 34,000 people here. 2010, there's 32. 2023, there's 34. I believe we're up 4% and our property values are not going down in the city. That's all I got to say at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak at this time? Anyone else?
Karen Maragen, East Point resident. Well, this is the last annual public comment reminding everybody, do not buy bunnies, chicks, or ducks as Easter presents. These are not starter pets. They're not cheap. They are extremely expensive animals. They require specialized care. You can't take them to just any old vet. They require vets who specialize in rabbits, chicks, and ducks. You're not going to keep chicks and ducks in a house. They need far more space to be outside in their natural environment. And you never, ever, ever keep a domestic rabbit outside. That is appalling. Rabbits are very high-stress animals. They can easily be frightened to death. We've heard the endless excuses, "Oh, but I have a hutch." "Oh, it's secure." "Oh, blah, 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 blah." And then they wonder why the poor rabbit was found dead outside. Why? Because domestic rabbits do not belong outside. It requires a lot of homework and a lot of research, and definitely a lifetime commitment. Rabbits, when they receive the proper vet care and the proper diet and socialization they require, they can easily live for 10 years, 12 years. So the shelters and the rescues are bursting at the seams. And we are so tired of having to go through this every year before Easter, telling people, "Do not buy bunnies, chicks, or ducks as Easter presents." Rabbits are very fragile. What do little kids do? They want to pick them up and squeeze them. Rabbits don't like being held. When they get stressed and scared and agitated, they kick, they bite, they scratch. There's not enough time to show you the scar I have on my arm from breaking up a fight with my own rabbits because the one was new. And my girl is very territorial. You know, you have always got to be on your toes when you have rabbits. If you saw the scar on my arm, you would freak out. He clamped down on my arm due to the stress of the fight and like-
Your time is up, ma'am.
-grinding. Thanks. Don't buy them.
Hello, I'm Deb Furelli. I've been in East Point for 30 years. This is my first council meeting, and it's really interesting. And the reason I'm speaking up is I've always had really, really good services, especially with the fire department. And when I hear about $350,000 for an EMT, and I know that I've always had good services in East Point, I don't plan on moving. I just retired. This is why it's my first council meeting,[1630.46] it's a pleasant surprise. And my only criticism of the city is my road on Collinson and Crusade. It's, I talked to the city garage, and he said there's no money for the roads. Half, they put, what did they put, the blacktop there, but it's like holes all over the place. I don't know, who do I go to for, to get the road, to find the money? They say there's no money to repair the roads, but my, that road is really, really bad. Honestly, I'll be at the next meeting. This is really interesting. And I guess I'm, yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mike Roth. I'm a 61-year resident of the city of East Point, graduated from high school. This isn't the reason that I was here tonight, but whatever Mr. Creech wants to do, is trying to do, it's not going to work. All my life, that building's never been open for any type of day function for the kids. We used to have men's softball and all that. Sure, the locker rooms, the bathroom, and the concession. That storeroom has never been open for anything. We just spent over $400,000 on that place. The things that are left in there right now, we share with the high school. It's up on shelves. I pulled all our stuff out. I don't have a key for that building anymore. So I don't know what he wants to do with it, but it's going to be a cabaco, because we already had damages last year. All the bathrooms got destroyed when they left it open during the day. It's just not going to work. We don't have any park attendance. So I just wish you guys would take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else at this time? Our city manager is going to read something from our residents, or visitors, or businesses.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So this is from Linda Flans. I received an email for the hearing of the public. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I sat in the last council meeting, and I'm shocked at the conduct that was allowed. Speakers were permitted to speak without stating their name and residency, addressing not the council, but the audience, berating them, using a racial slur, going over their time, and speaking out of order. The running of the meeting was complete incompetence. It is every resident's right to criticize anyone up on that bench for any decision they make. It has been said several times, if you can't take the heat, you should not be up there. No council members should be summoning their supporters to bully and even threaten residents from the podium during hearing of the public, because those residents have been openly critical of them. Residents deserve better. Thank you, Linda Flans.
Thank you. Anyone else? No, you can come back at the end and comment. Saying none. The first hearing of the public is now closed. We are going to the approval of minutes.
Madam Mayor, I would move that we receive and file the minutes of the regular meeting of March 21, 2023.
Second.
Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobb Muniz?
Yes.
We have no scheduled hearings. We're unfinished business. So we're going to go to reports from administration. We have our city manager, Ms. Walton. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I'll start out again by highlighting the beautification cleanup that's coming up on April 22 at 11:00 a.m. Their meeting at the Eight Mile and Grashit. I'm sure Councilmember DeMonico will be highlighting that a little more later in the meeting. We're also moving forward with the Clean City Initiative. We'll look forward to those dates being publicized as well. A highlight on the construction, the water main replacement has been completed on birchwood, firwood, beechwood, and Nine Mile. We are finalizing lead line replacements in those areas, and still working on gas replacement from, or will start working on the gas replacement from Grashit to Tuscany. I know some of the residents are also, or have also asked about the updates on the recent funding put in for reconstruction and resurfacing. So Ma Avenue will be bid out, and we're looking at a start in the late spring, early summer. Resurfacing will be, is actually in design phase, and will be bid out in the summertime. Water filters are still available at the library, DPW, and City Hall. We are nearing the point where you may need replacement cartridges. You can also pick up those boxes at the same locations. Petitions are available at this time at the clerk's office for the position of mayor. You have to submit before, or on April 25, before the clerk's office closes. So again, those are at the clerk's office. Yard waste has been started. We are currently still with GFL. That transition to priority waste is not until July 1. I know there have been some questions about that transition. We also have begun Long Monday. Actually, this week was our first Long Monday, and on May 1 is our next Long Monday. And for those that are not aware, Long Monday is actually at DPW, and will take excess trash that you have. So doing your spring cleanup, it's the perfect time to bring over trash to the DPW yard and throw those away for the residents in the community. We do have board and commission seats that are still open, so we have some applications on the table if you're interested and available. And I'd urge everyone to kind of look into the upcoming events at the library. We have some scrapbooking events, some evening book clubs that you can join. We have everything on our website, social media, and on our cable channel. With that, Mayor, I can take any questions that your council may have.
Council, any questions?
Sure, Mayor. Ms. Walton, just one, I guess more one comment than a question about, speaking of the beechwood, water main, and the projects over there. I'd been assured before that we're communicating with the residents, so I guess like, in future projects, if we can communicate better, I guess, because there were still residents reaching out to me that their driveways were blocked, or the water was shut off. And I know, of course, the water can be, you know, there might need to be a reason they shut it off at a time that they weren't certain of. But just information, just ahead of time, say, hey, for this month, you know, it's possible there's like an emergency shut off. We're planning on doing it these days, that sort of thing. I think our civil engineering firm's not, you know, overlooking that or something, because there's been a few residents reaching out to me about that. So that was all.
Thank you. Anyone else? We're going to go to our finance director. Well, we have Ms. Danielle today, who is like a mayor pro tem when he's not here. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The finance director is on vacation this week. So last week, we received an update from Treasury regarding the state pension grant that will be available. There is a webinar this Thursday that I'll be attending to get more information. The state grant done line, the grant done lay for that is June 15. So we'll be presenting that to council in the next few weeks.
Now, what is that grant again? Pardon? Now, what is that grant for everyone out in August? No?
It's for pension funding.
Okay. Any questions, concerns? Thank you.
Thank you.
City Attorney, Ms. Albright. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Council's in the seat of our monthly status report. There is a supplement that I wanted to add to that, though. Last week, the building official requested that our office commence with nuisance abatement proceedings regarding three different properties, based on some very, very significant property maintenance issues. For anybody in the audience, or anybody watching at home who may be a neighbor, the properties are 23817 Normandy, 24900 Almond, and 24600 Latham. The city will be taking action regarding these properties and ultimately securing an order from the Circuit Court for the authority to either require the property owners to clean up all the junk or debris, or to allow the city to enter upon the property and do the same thing. So that's all I have, Madam Mayor, this evening. I may have to answer any questions.
Any questions for our attorney, city attorney? All right, saying none, moving right along to new business. Item A, approval of Rockin', Summer Nights Special Event sponsored by Rare. Council?
Motion to approve Rockin' Summer Nights sponsored by Rare for August 8, 2023.
Support. Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobb Muniz?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Next item B, approval of East Point Memorial Day Parade.
So moved.
Yes. Before I do a support on this, I want the city manager, she wants to make a point of notice on something.
Thank you. So on the agenda, on the financial impact, it does have the police department, their estimated charge being $1,796. Commissioner Lucido actually reached out, and we had quoted a different price at $850. So the mix up was, we have eight officers that are needed, four are going to be reserves. And so that, that impact would only be $850. So I just want to clarify that prior to council moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
So moved with the correction.
Can I get support on that?
Sir, we're assuming the recommended motion here with that change is what we're motioning?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll second that.
Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobb Muniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Item C, approve the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve the special land use for property located at 24545 Grashit Avenue.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would move to adopt the recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve the special land use of property located 24545 Grashit Avenue.
I'll second that. I had one question, though. Should we, should we read into the record the Planning Commission's recommendation? Because there's, well, at least there's a, well, like the community improvements, or I forget what benefits, is unusual, and I just want to make sure we're very specific. Should we do that, Ms. Walton, or Mr. Albright?
That would be good for the benefit of the public, so they know exactly what this involves.
All right. Mr. Curly, can I add that to your motion here?
That would be fine.
So, yeah, then the more extensive part here, move to recommend approval of the proposed special land use for Medical Marijuana Provisioning Center, 24545 Grashit. That is the right one right now, right? Yeah, okay. To City Council with the required and recommended conditions outlined in the planner's review dated February 6, 2023, and in the engineer's letter dated November 29, 2022. Saluting item number two is, it's our professional opinion that a decorative screen wall to improve the character of the neighborhood and walkability, and based on the following findings of fact, the applicant will provide the agreed-upon community benefits, and these benefits create a net positive impact for the community. With the community benefits and recommendations slash requirements from the planner, the project's harmonious with the master plan and an improvement to the community, and the applicant will provide all required and recommended conditions as outlined in the city planner and engineer report, which will improve the project even more. The end.
Yeah, I concur with the addition to the main motion.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. I'm wondering, Mr. Curly, if it would be better to amend your motion so that we approve, given that Mr. DeMonico just read that, we approve the motion under the condition that the community benefits will be performed regardless of the business performance?
Say that again. I'm not sure. I'm not sure where you're going.
That we will approve the motion to, to adopt the recommendation of the Planning Commission-
Yes.
-under the condition that the community benefits will be performed regardless of the business performance. It's just a safety net.
Let us, let me make sure I, regardless of the-
The business's performance. Yes. So that it's not conditioned upon business performance.
Okay.
If it's a community benefit, it's a community benefit.
All right, that may, yes, sure. So we have two amendments to the main motion. One from Council, DeMonico, and one from you, right, Madam Mayor?
Why, we can't put it all in one?
Yeah, we can accept, I accept both amendments to the main motion.
Okay. Can I get support on that?
Yeah, no, I'll second that.
Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobb Muniz?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
No. Moving right along to item D, approve the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve the special land use for the property located 20715-17 Kelly, 20709 Kelly, and 17375 Eight Mile Road. Counsel?
Sure, Mayor. I'll move, just as I did the last time, with the full Planning Commission recommendation, move to approve the proposed special land use for Medical Marijuana Provisioning Center at 20715 through 17, and 20709 Kelly Road, to City Council, well, this is us, with the required and recommended conditions outlined in the planner's review dated February 11, 2023, and in the engineer's letter dated December 12, 2022, and based on the following findings of fact, the applicant will provide the agreed-upon community benefits, and these benefits create a new positive impact in the community. With the community benefits and recommendations slash requirements from the planner, the project's harmonious with the master plan and an improvement to the community, and the applicant will provide all required and recommended conditions as outlined in the city planner and engineer report, which will impact the project even more. And just for the residents, I'm reading this directly out of the packet with, without any changes.
Mr. DeMonico, would you be willing to do the same with this, where it is approved under the condition that the community benefits will be performed regardless of the business performance?
And with that added?
Thank you.
So that's the total motion.
That's the whole, total motion. And again, both of these properties are based on medical marijuana facilities. And again, I am excited about, I'm always excited about new businesses, and I'm always excited about bringing more into our community. But I don't think it's an asset to our community to bring a marijuana facility. It has different impacts on some people who, I have two sisters that are nurses, and they don't see that it's going to be that big of a medical change with that. And so I said that to say, again, I'm about businesses. I'm about bringing business to this community, but I just don't think it fits our image as a family town to bring medical marijuana here. So that being said, you have motion and support. Please call the roll.
Did we have support?
I thought you supported it.
I made a motion.
You made the motion. Can I get support, please, for those that agree with the motion that's on the floor?
I'll second.
Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobb Muniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
No. Next item is approval of the quick claim deed for 20001 Pleasant St. Clair Shores for the Southeast McCombe Sanitary District Council.
Madam Mayor, I would like to move to authorize the execution of the quick claim deed for the property located at 20001 Pleasant Street, St. Clair Shores, Michigan.
Madam Mayor, I'll support that with a question. They're indicating that once the quick deeds are all done, that would pave the way for construction of a new facility. So I assume that they're going to build another building. So I'm asking now, are we going to get stuck with the bill, or is the SMDA going to be paying for it themselves?
I believe the SMDA is going to be paying for it themselves, all the money from East Point and the other neighboring communities put a certain amount of money in that to be paid in the budget.
So the money's in their budget to pay for the new construction?
I believe so.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong. We have our finance person down there that I know, Mr. Blum works with them hand-to-hand with the budget for the SMDA, to make sure that we have funds that goes into that pool of money with the St. Clair Shores and things like that, to make sure this building is paid for, correct?
Well, I just don't want to suddenly get a bill saying this is your, of the five communities, or four, that this is your share of construction of a new building. So I'm hearing from you, who is our representative, that we are not going to be billed.
I said, correct me if I'm wrong. That's why I am referring to our finance, who handles our money, that also works hand-to-hand with them, to make, because we're in budget season. And so to make sure that what I'm saying is corrected. So that's why I'm referring to her.
I'd have to verify that information with the finance director.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the answer is nobody knows?
Nobody knows.
If we're going to get stuck with a bill.
Not sure about that right now. So how do you want to proceed? You don't want to just sit here and be quiet?
Would you rather we table to the next meeting for the answer?
Well, what we're doing is, for the quick deed, that then gives them permission to go ahead and build. Yeah, I, I'd like to know, because that bill is going to be astronomical if it's only divided by four cities. And there's been nothing that has come across our table saying that we may, or we will be billed X amount of dollars. So whoever's responsibility that is, I'd like to find out, and yeah, let's put it on the next agenda to let us know if we're going to get stuck with a bill.
City Manager?
Thank you. So my understanding is that it is SEMSD that wishes to construct a new facility at the site. We have not agreed to, and nothing has come forward with us paying to construct the site. The site is actually located in St. Clair Shores. So my understanding for the quick claim deed is to clear out the issues with the title so that we can move forward. Now, if something was to come, that would be clarified and brought to council if we were going to participate financially in the building of that, of that facility.
And then we also, with our, with Ms. Cobb Muniz, our councilwoman, when we went to do budgeting, they did say they talked to Mr. Blum that those things were in the budget. But again, I want to, I don't want to be incorrect on that. So that's why I said, once you get that information, let me know. I know you probably wasn't ready for that question, so that's, that's okay.
Well, Madam Mayor, it does say at the last paragraph, it is anticipated the city of Centerline will execute a quick game deed in the near future. So-
We are the last two cities.
Well, I know. So I would move that we table with this until our next council meetings, and in the meantime, find out what the thought is about sharing the cost.
Sounds good to me.
That's a motion, yes, to table.
I'll second that.
Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobb Muniz?
Yes.
Item at the bid award for the DPW underground storage tank removal. Counsel?
Mayor, I'll motion we award the removal of the DPW underground storage tank to the low bidder, Vincon Incorporated of- low bidder, Vincon Incorporated of 41130 East Ann Arbor Trail, Plymouth, Michigan, 48170, for the low bid of $14,378, plus a 20% contingency of $2,875.60 for a total estimated removal cost of $17,253.60.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobb Muniz?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Item G, approval of the purchase of two LifePak 15 V4 cardiac monitor defibrillators, council?
Mayor, I'll motion, we approve the sole source designation and approve the purchase of two LifePak 15 V4 cardiac monitors with multi-year pro-care extended warranty in the amount of $79,775.18. Price includes a trading credit of $13,000.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Mayor, sir, before we go on, could I ask if Ms. Walton could just, if you could touch on a couple of the points you emailed out earlier about the budget and just, well, I guess why we're buying them?
Yes, so we initially budgeted to purchase one of the defibrillator packs, and we changed that once we received the quote and had service. The two that we have now are currently from 2012 with a recommended life of eight years. And having the conversation, our fire chief, Brian Markort, received notice that it would take 42 to 43 weeks to receive them, but also that the version that we have will not be able, will not be serviced as of next year, is my understanding. And so we've amended our request, initially in the budget was just one, and we've amended to bring forward to council to purchase two, based on the timeline of receiving them, and that the other defibrillator that we have will not be able to be serviced. Thank you.
I get support on that? Okay, please call the roll, thank you.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobb Muniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Item H, the approval of emergency medical services and transportation contract. I know we're gonna do some discussion on this, so let's go. Now, with them coming up here, the fire department, thank you for being here, and your service, by the way. They said that they had negotiations, but I don't think we talk about negotiations up here. So I don't know if that would be appropriate right now, but what you did say was, what we have on the agenda today, that was not a conversation, as far as what you're reading today, correct? You said you didn't know about this budget and this contract till today, because y'all had a conversation yesterday, and you said that wasn't talked about, right? Yesterday afternoon, okay. I'm gonna let council speak, and then I'll tag along. Council?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I guess, before I make a statement and ask a lot of questions, I would refer back to the city manager and have the administrators explain why we're gonna spend $351,000 for one person and one vehicle.
Sure. Thank you. So, yes, this is the emergency medical services and transportation contract. City of East Point has been in contract with MedStar Ambulance since 2012. This is not a change in service, this is to supplement our low staffing. So our department, as of July 1, will be down an entire shift. So we have three shifts right now, we have low staffing, we have a hard time getting to a six-man shift, which is understandable with taking time off. This is not saying that we have a bad department, I think we have incredible guys, incredibly qualified guys. We do have a requirement for anyone that is hired, that they are required to be a paramedic. The City of East Point does not provide transportation services. And so this has been a conversation, but as the mayor had stated, this is not a forum to discuss negotiations or the conversations that have been had in negotiations. This is a request of council to supplement the services based on our low staffing. So we've brought forward a contract in a presentation to supplement the low staffing with having MedStar within the city to assist the fire department when needed and when we are low-staffed on the medical side. And so if we have low staffing, our priority in the fire department needs to be our fire calls, and if we are able to move forward with this contract, MedStar would be able to assist when we are at low staffing with ensuring that our medical calls are handled by MedStar. Again, this is a one-year contract that we're presenting based on our low staffing to ensure that we're able to respond and be at every single one of the calls. This is one specific vehicle located within the City of East Point 24/7, on a holiday and any other day within the calendar year, that this person is designated within the City of East Point at all times, even if the designated person is sick or ill, MedStar replaces that vehicle. We also have 23 to 30 other vehicles that are in the area to also provide an aid and assistance. So again, I will clarify, this is to supplement our low staffing, this is not a intention to permanently transition away, this is to supplement an aid while we do have conversations with the union and while we do move forward with our intention to be fully staffed within the department.
In one...
Councilmember DeMonico?
Thanks. In one year then, to supplement right now, in one year, how do we expect to get back, I guess, if this isn't going to be permanent?
Sure. So part of that is negotiations, we are currently in negotiations with the union, we both have come to the table with an understanding of moving forward, we'll have to see where we are with an agreement, and that is our intent. And I believe the union is, has the best faith effort to get to full staffing as well, that is their intention, we're just not at a point of an agreement. We've also had trouble in getting individuals that are qualified to actually come in. Since I've started here in East Point in 2020, the fire department is one that I have been hiring for, for over three years now. And so we've had the position open since January, we have five positions that we can fill now. If we had candidates, we'd move forward with an eligibility list and move them into the department. We simply don't have the candidates to move that forward. And so at this point, we need to supplement that staffing so that when needed, we can aid our fire department so that they can respond to the fire services, and we ensure that our medical calls are handled as well. So we'll continue working with the fire department, we will continue working in recruiting individuals to the department, and hopefully, we settle on a contract that is supported by both units, and we move forward and are able to hire and staff the department appropriately.
A clarification, because there was a lot of talk about one person for the fire department as opposed to, for $75,000 as opposed to $350,000 for one person from MedStar. But based on what you have explained, this is a 24/7 commitment, which would mean that it would not be just one individual, per se. It means that MedStar is going to supply a number of individuals 24 hours a day, seven days a week, no matter what, in one vehicle for this city, correct?
Yes, there will be an individual within the city at all times, yes.
So is that, if I may, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So as I understand it, come July 1st, we're gonna be down to 14 firefighters. I call them firefighters if my language is not right, firefighters. So they're trying to hire people, they don't want to come here. We have people retiring, are leaving, our firefighters either retiring or going to another city, because they're not satisfied with what our contract provides, especially the benefits. So as I understand it, with this vehicle you're talking about, so if MedStar is over here at the big boy, and this one van is over at the high school, and MedStar goes out, this other fellow will follow them, particularly just with what they call Charlie and Delta calls, Delta being the lower of the two. But I, as I understand it, that this extra vehicle you're talking about and you're asking us to improve, will not necessarily go out 100% of the time, because the calls that MedStar would go out will not necessarily be Charlie or Delta.
So our intent is not to change the initial callouts. As long as our staffing is there and adequate, that they can respond, that is our intention is to allow them to operate. Our concern is when we fall below staffing and are unable to respond to fires, we do not have another contract to provide those services, other than a mutual aid agreement and pulling in three other communities to assist. And so if we fall below staffing, we do have another person within the community that will respond initially to those calls. But we also, that person is also a paramedic and would be able to respond to all calls, whether they're Charlie or Delta. So the callouts would change depending on the staffing that we have within the department.
Let me, let me go back up for the first or second sentence that you said, that we get below staffing, that we might not be able to respond to fires or emergencies, did I hear you say that?
So we'll always, we have mutual aid, and so if an alarm is called, the first alarm is called, Warren would respond, Roseville and St. Clair Shores. So the community is safe in terms of response. Our concern is that if we don't have enough staff, and there's a fire, and all of our men are on a fire, how do we respond to a medical concern? And so that is where our concern lies, that supplementing their service based on the low staffing with MedStar would aid to ensure that our community is covered with medical response.
If I may continue, Madam Mayor.
Yes, please.
And I don't want to get into negotiations, because that's your job and firefighter's representative's job, but you had mentioned about what the requirements are, and you don't need to respond to this, I'm just asking, suggesting that lowering the requirements of firefighters being hired into our city might be something that y'all want to look at. You don't need to respond to that, but I'm just saying that, but when we get down to July 1st with 14, that would be 5, 5, and 4, right, at the three shifts, pretty serious talk. So all I'm saying is, here's a big question that the two sides ought to be talking about, what can we do, bottom line, what can we do to get people in to be our firefighters for our city? Is it to increase the benefits? Is it to increase the salary? Is it to lower the requirements? I think those are three things that you all, I'm sure, are talking about, but that's a serious thing. The other question, when you got the proposal from MedStar and they said $351,039, did you collapse like I did?
It is an expensive charge, and it's not our intent, again, to spend that funding with MedStar and to move forward with this contract after this year. This is an emergency requirement, that we want to make sure that our services are provided and that we can supplement our services based on our low staffing. It is not our intention to move forward in that way.
Well, I'll yield the floor, and then come back, go ahead.
I think, councilwoman, did you...
No, I definitely...
Okay.
Sure, so if I could elaborate on the part where we said, so they're going to be in the city 24/7 for the one year, but how, it sounds like not every call, well, I mean, definitely not, you know, the higher priority ones they'll show up to, but I guess just in general, from the description just now, how many of the calls is this person going to show up to? Is it expected? Yeah, I guess just a general answer to that, I guess, would be good?
Our intent is if they're in the community, that they're showing up to all of them to supplement the services that are there, and then if there is an issue in terms of staffing, they would be the primary ones that are responding.
Yeah, I guess I'm, it just seems like it might not be that many, I guess just from my personal experience, like I had, I think a lot of you know, ruptured brain aneurysm, the police department showed up first, the fire department showed up second, and then MedStar showed up. So if we had this even extra vehicle, it seems like our department's covering that one anyway, the, our paramedics will be there before even the ambulance, I drove away on the ambulance, but, so if that's the case, like, say, I think Mr. Curley maybe was talking earlier, where he was trying to say where it is, you know, if it's in the northeast corner of the city, and it's a south, yeah, northeast corner, and it's in the southwest corner, everyone else is gonna get there first, and then having that extra vehicle is not gonna be worth maybe the money at that point in time.
So operationally, it changes, and the tone outs matter, and so the tone outs that come out from Serisa are not all simultaneous, and they're in a row, so one person has to be toned out first. And so if there is an operations issue, that would be changed to ensure that we're able to respond to both calls.
I know when you all came up, you said you didn't know that this was on the agenda, and it wasn't discussed. So what I'm saying is, if I need to stop Mr. Albright, because I know we're not supposed to go into negotiations, but that's not what I'm trying to do, so I want to be careful, if you see what's on this agenda, and the union is out there, do we need to table this? And you guys go back, behind the scenes, do what you need to do, because if you can't get that together, then we do need to do this, because we're talking about the safety of our residents. So if it's about money or whatever it is in the back scene, you know, in the back, then, you know, do what you need to do, because my priority is the residents. Now, you know I'm about public safety, but the residents need the service. So if you guys can't get it, I'm thinking about tabling this, and you all go back, having a conversation tomorrow morning, bring it back at the next council meeting, and if it can't get resolved, then let's do what we need to do. And then on top of that, I was also thinking about going out to bid for this, because $350 is a lot of money, we might find someone that can do this job with a lower bid. But before we do that, I would like to actually have hands-on firefighters, because we're gonna need that anyway. But we can't come to an agreement, then we have to do what we have to do. I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that, this, we don't have to go back and forth and have a conversation, but I'm just saying, council, since we have had the union and the fire department up here saying, we didn't know this was happening, we're willing to negotiate and do what we have to do to get these people hired, you guys want to table this and bring it back?
Mayor, if I may?
Your address, is it okay for me to respond?
Well, all of you, as the fire department, and also council and the manager.
Mayor?
May I respond to anything right now?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, operationally...
Joe, will you come to the mic so you're on?
So, yes, operationally, we have been dealing with MedStar for 10-plus years. So to be clear, we've had a lot of fires in the last 10 years, and when we are at those fires, MedStar handles all these runs all by theirself.
Okay.
They don't get help from anybody else. Operationally, I don't know how many times our levels have dropped to the point where we haven't been able to respond on a priority run. I do know that our staffing levels are dropping dangerously low. The medical runs are being handled by MedStar, that's what their ambulance is for. We respond to every high priority run possible that we can. If we're out on a fire, we can't respond. Our focus needs to be getting firefighters in this building, because we are cross-trained to do both. I concur with what you're saying, that we need to get back to the table and get this ironed out, because the priority needs to be the residents. I don't think that this SUV is gonna satisfy the needs of the residents, the shortcomings is the lack of personnel. This has been brought up for well over a year, this has been predictable, I have been sounding the alarm about this for over a year, not necessarily with the city manager, but with management inside the fire station and the public safety director when he was over, you know, overseeing us. This is nothing new, we have been trying to hire, people have been moving on, me and Ms. Walton have a great working relationship, the common goal is to staff the department 100%, we support getting back to the table ASAP, and I would support tabling this, or a no vote at this time.
Okay, because I'm gonna let you know, with all due respect, if we have to come back with this agreement, I'm gonna vote yes. We can't go, because we're gonna always have a staffing position, because you, a staffing problem, that's every city, but if you say you've been dealing with this for a year to the point where you couldn't come to an agreement, and now we're here, and you're like, whoa, you know, it shouldn't have to, it shouldn't have to have gotten here.
And you're 100% correct.
It shouldn't have, you know?
And operationally, it is important, the residents do need to know they are safe with the fire response. We do have a first alarm assignment, this is all through the Combs County Mutual Aid Pact. When we have a structural fire here, a first alarm is called, and you have engines coming from Shores, Roseville, Warren, and we can escalate alarms, so the residents do need to know that they are safe. We're a single-station house here in East Point on Nine Mile, we are the busiest engine house in the county. There is no one that gets more calls for service in this county than that fire station on Nine Mile.
That I do know, and that's why I thank you for the service, but we do not want to overwork our firefighters, and we don't have any staff, so I want to be careful with that, councilman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple questions, city manager, the $351,000, did they give you a breakdown, or do we just take that figure and divide by 365?
They did give a breakdown.
What's, they did give you a breakdown?
Yes, it's in the, in the agenda packet, there's a breakdown of the staffing, personnel, cost, equipment, and everything else, so there is a complete breakdown.
Well, I agree, I, there's no way in hell I'm gonna vote for $351,000 now. I think, as I told before, and the cat's out of the bag, folks. You gotta sit down, you gotta sit down and negotiate. You got to sit down, you got to sit down and negotiate. And, you know, if it means lowering the requirements, and folks, I'm not suggesting that the requirements will be so lowered that the person's in Epp with you goes out for a fire, but there are sections of the contract that we can lower the requirements. That's a big bite out of our budget for one year for $351,000. And I think with going back to the table, negotiating in good faith, which I know you would, but, you know, take a look at lowering the requirements.
And if I could add one more thing to this. What is the guarantee that this vehicle will be here? Who's the oversight? There is, we're supposed to have an ambulance in the city all the time. We've had to call St. Clair Shores for ambulances, we've had to call Roseville for ambulances, and they're not in our pact. Those are our brothers that come and help our residents, because there are certain times that MedStar can't respond. They are short-staffed too, they are overworked too, their employees are held over every day. So, this staffing shortage, it is a nationwide thing. We get it. But I want to know, what's the guarantee that this vehicle will be in the city and who is overseeing that to make sure that vehicle is here?
Yeah, we have a lot of questions on that, but the thing about it, we have to find a solution. Everybody got questions, questions, questions. The solution for...
Is hiring. Yeah, that's the solution.
The hiring, we don't know how, you know, how we're going to hire people if y'all don't come to a negotiation. So, if you guys don't come together and renegotiate, whatever you have to do, then this is the solution for now, until other options come. But we have to make sure that our residents, if we have low staffing, we have to have a solution to our problem. And this is the solution for right now.
We are ready, willing and able.
Okay, I know our councilwoman wanted to say something, sorry.
Yes, I just had a couple of questions for our city manager. I just wanted to clarify, we did post an RFQ, right, and we only got one bid back, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and then, the $351,000 does not just represent manpower, it also represents transportation, which we don't currently provide through our fire department, correct?
We do not provide transportation through the fire department, no.
And that, excuse me, I don't know if what you're asking was answered correctly. That does not provide transportation to the hospital. That $351,000 is for an SUV vehicle to drive around town. That vehicle's not transporting anybody to the hospital.
So, the cost does not include, so we do not provide transportation. The cost is for the one person that does respond, but if the person does need to be transported, that is done through this service.
And then, an additional bill goes to the person's insurance.
Understood, understood. And then, this is also representative of support in low staffing situations.
Correct.
Okay, and then, are you confident that we are able to sustain the city's callouts for the next three weeks while we wait for our next council meeting, if we were to table this today?
I'm not.
And are you confident that you all, if you were to go back to the table tomorrow, could possibly come to an agreement?
I am not.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, okay, so this, well, this is kind of crazy to me, because I didn't even realize we went out to bid on this and just in our Friday packet, learned of this. We may be at some point in the past, in a meeting, talked about it, but if this has been such a serious issue, it's never been brought up to council, so it was literally in the packet, this is like the first discussion we're having on it, and we're saying, three weeks now, we can't wait three weeks until next meeting, is what we're saying.
That's not accurate. We have had conversations in closed session regarding this issue. Does anyone else in council recall a conversation in closed session? Obviously, we can't go into detail at this time.
No.
I do recall that we have had renegotiation, you guys were going to negotiations, and why we couldn't hire other firefighters. I do remember, you guys don't remember, we did have a conversation about going into negotiations with the fire department and why it has been a struggle for us to hire and how our city manager was finding new ways for us to hire new firefighters. We were, I do remember that.
And that would predate me. So, if I say I don't remember, that's because I was not here.
Well, that's a good reason. Madam Mayor, I want to make, if everybody's done, I want to make a motion to table, and once you do that, all the conversation's over, so I want to give everybody a chance to say everything they want to say before I table.
May I speak one more time?
Yes, please.
You know, we are confident that, we feel that this should be a standalone issue, and the fact that we are going to lower the requirements to hire somebody, that is what our plan is. And then, we, the plan forward hopefully will be to provide them with the education to bring them up to an advanced life support level. We believe that this should be a standalone issue, and we can handle that with a separate LOU without completing the full negotiation process. That can be handled that way.
Yeah, sure. I had one more, so, I guess like, a question is, earlier, Ms. Walton, you told us that the department had been informed. Clearly, it seems like that's not the case.
So, I spoke with the fire chief, that it was mentioned in the officers' meeting last week. We do have Brian Markort here, who can state that.
Mr. Markort, could you weigh in?
Thank you. You're almost there.
Yes, I did bring it up at the council meeting. There's been times when we have been running short-staffed. They've been doing an outstanding job of filling the overtime, but there has been days when we have been short-staffed. And so, we're just looking at any avenue to try to ensure that the service is provided to the residents.
And then, I think, how come this is not an item that's, I mean, we should be extending our contract with MedStar. Technically, our contract is expired with MedStar. We should be extending the regular contract, and then, if anything, looking at this separate. Why are we not doing that?
That's an option, if that's the route that council would like to go. It was bid out based on low staffing. We've tried to have conversations to try and get people in the door. This is not our first option of resolving the issue. This is really our last-ditch effort to ensure that we can cover services. So, we've had conversations, the union has stated, we've met multiple times for several months, we've tried to come to a resolution to hire people, to bring people in the door. We've been unable to do that. So, we're at a point now where we'd like to renew the contract, add the additional service, to supplement the services that we have to get to full staffing to next year. We'd rebid for the straight-out contract that we did before, while we're at full staffing, and move forward as we are now. So, we have held this in an attempt to come to an agreement, so that we can get to full staffing. We've been unable to do so. The chief has confirmed, he's mentioned it in an officers' meeting, they spoke today about it. I was available all day today to also answer any questions. I shared that with the chief. I had no questions that came forward until now. So, we've done all that we can to try and supplement the staffing, so we're bringing it forward to council. Of course, it's on the table for all of you to decide if you'd like to supplement the medical services, and if not, you'd like to table, or you don't want to extend those, then that's totally up to the council at this time.
Further, if I can add?
I want to, I'm going to let, I'm going to let councilman, then you, then me. Can I get a term?
I think just allocating these resources, yeah, just allocating these resources differently, I think, would be a lot more bang for your buck. That's all.
So, I, as a senior command officer, and we have another one in the room, I was at that officers' meeting. And what was illustrated to us, and I don't know if signals got crossed, was there may be times when we're low-leveled, that we will be responding only on echo-level responses only, which is basically, someone's dead, dying, they're taking their last breath. It was never illustrated to us that we would be contracting out an additional $350,000 and MedStar would be cruising around town in an SUV. That was never pointed out at that level. Our understanding in the officers' meeting was that on days where our staffing drops crucially low, which isn't necessarily 100% defined, that we would not perhaps be responding on some of the higher-end priority medical runs.
I'm going to skip myself in, Councilman Curly.
Yeah, go ahead.
What I wanted to say was, we can also, we don't have to wait, you know, another meeting, we can do a special meeting. If you all go to the table tomorrow and it doesn't work out, then we can have a special meeting to approve this, because we have to have a solution to the problem, regardless of what you guys, you know, agree to or not. So, that's what I'm thinking, I think that's what, because Councilman Curly was thinking about tabling it. Sounds like Councilman DeMonico is not in it to win it right now, because it's a lot of discussion that you all didn't have or didn't know, and it should be talked about.
Again, there was a lot of discussion. We put things forward, nothing was put forward to us.
Okay.
And again, we are here, we're ready, we're willing, we want to negotiate, we want to get this done, we understand what the future looks like. But again, we're not here to negotiate, but there is a cost to doing business and there is a cost to being competitive in the workforce.
Right.
You know, if we want to attract high-quality candidates, provide the best service to our residents, at the end of the day, we're all talking about this, our game needs to be elevated.
Now, you know, being an ex-police officer, I'm for public safety.
I know you are.
Because you already know.
We know.
But at the same time, if we can't do our job, then somebody, you know, the residents are...
We can, because if we're willing to...
No, you're doing your job, but I'm saying, if people are retiring, we can't hire staff, we need to have a supplement for our residents.
But the supplement, the supplement is $350,000 for one guy in a vehicle.
But it might save a life, and that's more than $350,000.
I assure you, if that $350,000 got filtered into the fire department, we would be hiring people.
And that's when discussions come in.
That's right.
Councilman Curly, I know you wanted to say something.
Thank you. Just a couple of things that, and I think I'm probably saying this for the third time now, that both sides sit down, I hate that, "both sides."
Because we really do love you.
I know, we do. That's not, that's not, that's not very nice for me to say, "both sides." But they're going to sit down, they're going to negotiate, and I guess I'm hung up on lowering the requirements to get in there, and I guess that's going to involve both to agree to. You brought up that if they come up, if tomorrow, wouldn't it be great? Tomorrow, they sit down, they said, "Okay, we agree, blah, 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 we don't have to spend the $351,000." So, I want to table this until, I'm not going to put a date on it, Madam Mayor, I'm just going to, because typically, when you table something, by the law, by the things that we're supposed to table it to the next meeting. So, I'm not going to say table it to the next meeting. I'm just going to say, I want to table this until such time that administration and firefighters come to some type of agreement. And I, when we put this back on the agenda, Madam Mayor, and I shouldn't, I shouldn't say this, because everybody will go to my house with a flashlight and a crowbar to open up the door, but I'm going to be out of town, and I won't be back until the first meeting of May. So, if I could say, "I want to table this," I could say the first of May, but this is too important for even one of us to be missing. But I'm positive, I think, I think we can come to an agreement that everybody can live with. I'm just, I guess I'm not, I can't get over the fact that's $351,000, because that's... So, that's my motion, Madam Mayor, to table until such time that we hear a positive note from the city administration and the police union.
And then, if we come to, if we don't, we can always call a special meeting to get this approved, because this is important, emergency. We can always do that.
Get it approved or get it denied.
Either way, go, we can have a special meeting for either decision. That's why we have these meetings. So, we have a motion to table this. Any support?
I'll second it.
Motion and support. Any other discussion on this? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Coburnese?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One more item, I guess related to this. I'd like to see on the next agenda, we have in the MedStar contract, like I was mentioning earlier, the, being able to renew up to two additional two-year periods, it says in here. I'd like to see on our next agenda, to at least extend what we have right now, the, you know, contract we have with them, where we pay $0 right now in contract with them, so at least we continue the current service in legal form.
Okay. So, you're just giving that to administration, pretty much?
Yes, please, Ms. Walton.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item?
Mayor, if we may, can I just take five?
Yes, absolutely. We're going to take a five-minute recess, and we will be back. 10 minutes recess.
10 minutes. Ten minutes.
The meeting is back in session. The meeting is back in session, everyone. Thank you for being patient with me and council as we took a recess. Um, we're leaving off the item I, the presentation of City Managers' proposed fiscal year of 2023 through the 2024 budget and scheduling of the budget workshops.
City Manager?
Thank you. Um, first, I'd like to highlight, I know the budget message typically ends in it, but I want to highlight, um, all of our department heads, and specifically, our finance department, for all of the work that they put in. So Danielle, our controller, um, and then, as well as Randy Blum, and the work that they put in, um, in calculating and putting everything together, and all of our ideas, council's goals together, um, and putting our, our budget book together, as well as Otis in organizing, he's in the back, um, in all of this, and getting everything printed and binded for, for all of council. And so, really is a team effort, and we really appreciate all of their efforts and everything that they do. Um, so just as a brief highlight, um, and then moving forward with the recommendation for the budget workshops, um, the financial and operating plan has the objective of ensuring that East Point is able to provide the necessary governmental services essential to the public health, safety, and welfare of sustain, of, on a sustainable basis. Um, in the fiscal year 2324, we will see an increase of taxable values of, to 608.6 million, an 8.2 increase. Uh, we will see a one point, um, so a 1% increase in revenue sharing from the state, a 3.1% increase in Act 51 road funds, um, which we can talk afterwards. I know the road funds was a question, um, that a, a member, um, at the hearing of the public had, and we, we can speak about that in more depth after the meeting. Um, moving forward, uh, we have some recommendations for fiscal future planning, um, which is adopting water and sewer rates that reflect our current costs. Um, last year, we did not have an increase to the water sewer rates, um, and we are recommending a 6.7% increase. Um, in 2021, city council approved moving retiree healthcare to a common coverage, which took effect in January, uh, 2022. Uh, this change was reflected in the June actuarial report, um, and showed a $12.3 million liability reduction, so that was an incredible savings, um, on OPEB liabilities, um, and great decision from the city council. Um, as our controller had mentioned, uh, we are planning to submit, uh, for the Protecting Michigan Pension Grant Program. Um, at this point, we are 53.5% funded and eligible to apply for this grant program to get us to, uh, be, uh, a funded ratio of 60%, which is a requirement from the state. Um, and then, moving forward with, with a few other of the recommendations, is to be fiscally responsible when approving, um, personnel or projects, uh, that will affect the long-term financial sustainability, which would be compounding costs, um, year by year. So one-term costs are a little bit different, but the compounding costs that, uh, cause the city, uh, to, um, commit to cost every single year, that increase every single year, would be tough for our budget to sustain. Um, finalizing, uh, sound labor contracts, financially sound labor contracts, um, as mentioned earlier, at one of the, um, on one of the items, we are currently in negotiations with all six unions that the city has, um, and so ensuring that, that those contracts that are finalized are financially sound for the city's sustainability, um, and then annually reviewing and adjusting the fee schedule. So last year was one of the, um, large adjustments to the fee schedule, um, and we will be bringing forward another recommendation, um, for a city council to review, um, the fee schedule, but doing that on a regular basis to ensure that our building department, uh, costs are actually matching the services, um, and the fees that are assigned. Um, and with that, Mayor, um, my recommendation is to schedule the budget workshops, to go through, uh, the budget in detail, um, by department with city council on May 2nd and May 3rd, uh, so those would be special meetings at 6:00 PM. Uh, we do normally schedule those, the second week of May, um, but we were not aware at the time, um, I think it was in December or, um, November, when the, um, meetings were scheduled, if a May election was going to happen. Um, and so, it's usually the second Tuesday, or the first Tuesday after the first Monday for an election, so this is kind of a, a week earlier than normal, but we would recommend, um, scheduling it the, the days of May, or May 2nd and May 3rd.
Both at 6:00 PM?
Yes, ma'am.
Council, you agree with those dates and times? Do you have any other?
Yeah, that's fine. If you want a motion, I'll move, move, um, for those dates, the 2nd, 3rd, at 6:00 PM.
Motion of support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Kabeunis?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Item J, sir.
Sir, could I ask, uh, one question about the budget?
Of course you can.
Uh, can we, um, talk a little more about the water sewer? So the water sewer rates, um, were increased, as you said, the combined rate, 6.7 is the proposal. I saw there, there's an increase also in the ready-to-service and the, um, uh, what's it called, the station?
Am I asking, Ms. B?
Uh, Ms. Walton, I was asking.
No, I'm talking about the station. Was you talking, because I think that was an increase there too, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
So you have an increase there too.
Yes, so the finalized rates, uh, we were waiting, uh, the finalized rates. So as I had mentioned in email earlier, that a lot of the proposed, um, numbers, even the state equ, uh, or the county equalization is not finalized yet, um, and so awaiting the financial director to be here for those meetings, we can have those final numbers. Um, as we know, last year, that number was proposed, I think, at like a 9%, and that was, was changed as well. Um, and so allowing him to come, he has the, the worksheets that he can print and be prepared at the budget workshops to discuss that in more detail.
I think what's in the agenda, right, is like, 2.5%, I think it was, um, on the ready-to-service. And then I guess a, a large increase on that station maintenance fee. Um, it's a small fee, like, overall, it's going from a buck fifty-seven to two fifty-eight per month, so like, 64% increase on that, I guess.
Did you, I want to, did you want to talk about this at the budget workshop? Because I think this was just to schedule it. Uh, Councilman?
Sure. Uh, well, I just wanted to make sure, I guess, we cover it at the future. I mean, I guess if, uh...
All future's sake.
Um, and just so people know, I mean, I think they're the bigger, a lot of people are always, um, interested in the water bill, so.
Yes.
Also, she can start getting that information ready.
Yep, and so, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. It will be prepared. Randy will be here. He always has his budget workshop, or his budget worksheet with all of the calculations to explain that to council. Uh, the proposed budget is also on the website, and so if you'd like to access that, um, it is there for you to review. Um, and then, if you have any questions, of course, you can always reach out to us. We're available to, to answer those questions. And then we encourage you, uh, to come out to the workshops, um, in May, to hear in detail of how everything is calculated, so that it's very transparent.
Any other questions, Councilman? Item J, you did do the whole... Uh, item J, introduction and first reading of ordinance number 23-12... We did the, um, roll call, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. She, uh, Councilman, keep me on my toes.
I got you.
Uh, item J, introduction and first reading of ordinance number 23-1231, fiscal year 2023 to 24 appropriations and tax levies, council?
Sure, Mayor. I'll motion, we, uh, introduce and give first reading to ordinance number 23-1231, which provides the annual appropriations and tax levies for the city of East Point for fiscal year 2324, and schedule the ordinance for second reading and consideration of adoption at the regular city council meeting on June 20, 2023.
Second.
Motion of support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Kabeunis?
Yes.
Next, item K, the scheduled public hearing on proposed fiscal year 202324 budget. Uh, did you have some dates proposed already?
Um, yes, uh, we're proposing the first June meeting, so Tuesday, June 6th at 7:00 PM for the public hearing.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll motion, we schedule a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2324 budget and tax rate to support the budget for Tuesday, June 6th, 2023 at 7:00 PM pursuant to Chapter 12, Section 7 of the East Point City Charter, and direct the city manager to publish all required notices of the public hearing.
Second.
Motion of support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Kabeunis?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Item L, the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 23-1232, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, Boards and Commissions, creating a new Division 10, 10 Advisory Commission of the ordinances of the city of East Point. I know we're going to have discussion, so let's go right ahead, Councilman. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Albright?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to make one, uh, uh, change in the proposed ordinance itself under, uh, proposed section 2-524 dot 48, under the ex officio members. Um, the language should read, uh, "The teen advisory commission shall consist of the following four ex officio members who shall have no voting powers on such commission. One, uh, representative from the city manager's office, one representative from the city council, and two East Point High School student ambassadors between the ages of 13 and 18 as designated by the principal." That's the, that is the proposed language for the, for the ordinance this evening.
Councilman Curly?
Thank you. Uh, I want to propose a couple changes, couple motions, see if I can get a second, see if I can get a vote. But, uh, we talked quite a lot two weeks ago about this, and, um, my thoughts haven't changed, so what I'd like to do is, uh, make a motion to, under where it says, "All members shall be residents between the ages of 13 and 18", I would like to eliminate the word "resident." And I'm saying that because I, I feel very strongly that when I, a young person, when a child enters that, whether it's a junior high or high school or elementary, and become a student of our city, um, they should be counted for whatever, whatever's going on and not be excluded. Um, none of us mentioned Warren last, two weeks ago, but as we all know, or we should know, that, um, Warren is part, the northern part of Warren is our, part of our school district. So I am asking why, why the, why the warden wouldn't be automatically considered part of our, part of our resident. Um, but I think every, every child ought to be counted, you know, there's, there's kids that come from, whether it's, uh, Detroit, our Warren, our Harper Woods, that, uh, have the same interests and the same knowledge that kids from our city has. So that would be my, I have a couple other ones, Madam Mayor, but that's, that would be my first motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we doing, so, that's the motion, are we doing the discussion?
You wanted to discuss it first, because you might hear other people, you might hear everyone else have, in addition to what you want to put on there, and then...
Well, as long as you don't forget my motion. I didn't get a second.
You don't want to re, read it and just hear what everybody else say first?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm...
Yeah.
I thought you had an issue.
Absolutely.
You approached it as a discussion, I'm sorry. Um, this is, I have to say, this, this has become more of a hot topic than I thought that it was going to be, um, seeing that these young people, this particular age group, um, is our next electorate beginning next year, for some of them. Um, some of them are 18 already. As a matter of fact, last week, I met a student, um, at East Point High, who's already 18, already eligible to vote. So this is our current and our future elected electorate for the next few years. Um, I would think that we would want to get them involved as quickly as possible, but that notwithstanding, I just want to point out a couple of things with respect to residency. And number one, all of our boards and commissions have a residency requirement, because this is the city of East Point, and the business that we, uh, do here is for the city of East Point, for the residents of East Point, to benefit East Point. And our hope is that we can be a beacon and a light to the community around, communities around us, and then that they will be excited, um, by what we're doing here and want to do the same. So hopefully, this teen advisory commission would even function as an inspiration to some of the other organizations. That being said, I wanted to point out a couple of things. Um, there are numerous, uh, youth advisory and teen advisory commissions throughout the state of Michigan. Um, MML, if you go to their website, and, uh, that's actually where I have been getting my new electorate, uh, elected official training through, is MML. On their website alone, they lay out, uh, about nine or 10 different, uh, youth advisory or teen advisory commissions, several of which, uh, their communities... several of which are communities, including Farmington Mayor Youth Council, Grand Rapids Mayor Youth Council, Novi Youth, all have residency requirements. Sterling Heights has a youth advisory or teen advisory commission. It has a residency requirement, and in fact, theirs goes on to say, one of the ways that you can be disqualified and be removed from your seat is if you remove yourself from being a resident in their city. So, residency is important, and if we're going to raise that issue when it comes to our young people, then it opens the gate for us to have that same discussion about all of our boards and commissions, with the exception of Planning Commission, where it's legally mandated that you be a resident. So, unless we want to open up that door, so that all of our commissions and boards can be open to anyone of our surrounding communities, I, I think we need to maintain the same standard that we've had with other boards and commissions. Also, with respect to the purpose of this commission, this is not an East Point High School commission. The high school actually already has its own student council, which they call Student Assembly. They already have a government structure where they are teaching their young people civics there. So, all of those students, the 743 high school students at East Point High School, have the opportunity to serve in a student government role within their own high school. This is a citywide commission. We have approximately 1,993 residents in the city of East Point, who are between the ages of 13 and 18, who are high school students. Of that 1,993, only 549 of them go to East Point High School. So, that means approximately 70-plus percent of our residents are outside of the city. We need to draw them back in. We heard a resident say tonight, "What do we have for our young people here? What's being provided for our young people here?" This is an opportunity for us to draw in and hopefully get them engaged in the city to the degree that they're like, "Oh, my high school's right across the street. I could maybe go to school there." So, this is an opportunity to allow our young people to have their voices heard, and I think unless we want to open the door on all of our other boards and commissions when it comes to residency, whatever our standard has been, we should maintain it. And it helps to encourage them, as future voters, to want to be engaged in this community, in a homegrown community. We have police officers, firefighters, people who work for the city, who are homegrown individuals, and we want to continue to encourage that. And the best way to do that is to maintain the residency requirement.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, I've, I've got a question that I think will help me on this specific topic that Mr. Curly brought up. So, I think there's, at least how I've read it, or understood it, two different things that this commission could do. They could either do both, or one or the other. I guess, I think everything kind of falls into either they provide programming, or they provide recommendations to us. So, programming be like what, you know, the beautification commission does. We're talking about the cleanup, eat-up. Commission puts that all together themselves and invites the city out. You know, that's like programming. Recommendations be like the Parks Commission, where they go hang out at the parks, you know, make recommendations after they see what's going on there, go to a different park, make, you know, different recommendations to us after, you know, talking to residents too and seeing what's kind of, you know, what do they think we should change? I guess, like, I've mentioned, you know, we have like 17 baseball diamonds or whatever, and we don't have that many people playing baseball, so something like that. So, a recommendation sort of thing. Is this commission, I guess, what do you foresee, like, what's one example? I guess, because it says develop programming, like, what do you see as one example, maybe, that the commission would do? Or like, maybe on the recommendation front too, either or?
So, the, the point of, and it's laid out in the goals and objectives, the point of this teen advisory commission is that they, as residents, would come together, would talk about what it is that they need. Our goal is also, and our hope, is that they would also send out a representative to attend all of the various board and commission meetings. So, they have a representative that would go out from them and get involved in attending. The other boards and commissions know what they're doing, bring that back and see, how can the teens get involved with supporting what's happening in those other commissions? So, if beautification is having a cleanup day, then the teens might come back, share that with the teen advisory commission, and they say, "Hey, well, we're going to go and team up with beautification and be a part of their cleanup, or be a part of taking on, doing something in, in, in the city with planting flowers." The, the hope is also that in these conversations, they can come up and talk about what would they like to see in the city, and come up with viable options for what they would like to see, and then present that to council. But they're not just haphazardly making decisions or being, they're not able to make decisions that would be of consequence to the city, I guess is my point. They would only be coming together, coming up with a plan, and then presenting their ideas to city council. And that could be a plethora of things. They're young people with great minds. I'd love to see what they come up with.
If I may jump in for a second, were you finished? Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I believe in being consistent with our language or how our ordinances are structured for our commissions. And I've heard varying ideas of, should it be a commission, should it not be a commission? But this is how it's presented. I've also heard people come right to that podium and say that we don't want people that don't live in our, people who don't live in our community to make decisions for our community, or how we spend our tax dollars. And so, I think that if we start changing that, then we send mixed messages. And one thing that kids need is structure, consistency. And if we don't give them that, then how do we expect that of them? You know, and, and I understand in the perfect scenario, maybe it would be other options, but it's only so many spots available. I'm familiar with the student council and the student assembly. My kids were part of that, you know, from middle school on through to high school. So, I understand how that, that works and how they got involved, and they love it. The different things that they got involved with, within the school, helping out with different projects and things of that nature. I think it can be a beautiful thing, but I am a fan of consistency. If our language for commission says that there's a residency requirement, I believe that's what we should hold to. And it's not that we want to push anybody else out, but I do believe that with our boards and, with our boards and commissions, that there is that vested interest that you're putting back or investing in where you live. So, for me, I think that that's good, and I think the way that it's presented is, is good. So, I would be in support of it, as presented.
I think I agree with you all in a certain distinction, as far as, I see what Councilman Curly and Councilman Baker, and you both are saying. I think we can put all of our ideas together, as far as, I'm thinking is, let, of course, have them to be, you know, East Point residents, but also, if they go to any of our schools, it should be open to them. So, it is for East Point residents, but if they go to any of our schools, we should open it up to them. As a, you know, as an option if they want to go, because if they're going to a East Point High School or anything like that, or South Lake, and they're in our school district, they should have the opportunity, because they, they're, they chose East Point to invest in, and we should invest in them as well. So, we can put something together, well, it's for East Point, it's predominantly for East Point residents, yes, but if you are, attend any of our high schools, then they can be a part of this too. What do you all think about that?
Point of clarification, East Point School District has one high school, am I correct?
Correct.
Which is East Point High. So, this is for all residents of East Point, regardless of what high school they attend. It, it is set up, and that's why it is just, the only requirement is that you be a resident of the city of East Point. It's not so much about what school you go to, because, as I stated, 72% of our young people, who are between the ages of 13 and 18, are going outside of the, the school district. And we want a way to capture them and draw them back into investing right here in our city. So, if they go to South Lake, if they go to Warren, but they are homegrown in East Point, and they reside in the city of East Point, absolutely, they have the opportunity to apply. And of course, you know, when we initially looked at this, our number was way bigger. We only have so many spots up here on the dais, and we wanted to give all of them an opportunity to engage here at the dais. So, we tried to look at it from the standpoint of what was reasonable. And what is reasonable is to do a nine-member with two additional ex officio members, who would be appointed from East Point High School by the East Point High School principal. And there's not, with that particular portion of our proposal, there is not a residency requirement. So, the principal of East Point High School could use those two spots for East Point High School students who are not residents of the city, because they are non-voting. And so, in that regard, you, you still are engaging the East Point High School students and letting them know you're important and you matter.
Yeah. I was, thank you, I, I was going to ask about that with the, because I think that ties into this discussion about the two student ambassadors. I, I think, well, regardless, I guess, if we go, you know, with the residency requirement or not, should, because I imagine at least, you know, if there's nine, two are going to be from the high school. Shouldn't we just include them in the nine-member commission, and they'll have like a voting? What was the reason, I guess, for like, making them separate?
We wanted to stick with the residency requirement. We wanted to be consistent with the overall residency requirement, because otherwise, you open up a Pandora's box of residents then coming and saying, "Well, hey, if we have an open or a fluid residency requirement with regard to teen commissions, why don't we have, you know, I got a neighbor who's a great gardener who lives over in Warren, why can't they be on beautification?" So, the goal was to maintain our consistency as a city, to say, those who vote for things pertaining to our city are residents of our city. That's the aim.
Okay, I see. Okay, so, yeah, sort of a compromise, I guess, to Mr. Curly then? It'd be the nine residents, and it could be two additional if they're not. Okay, no, I, that makes sense now.
Two ex officio.
That was kind of going over my head, sorry.
Yes, they would be at the appointment of the, of the principal, at her discretion. And when I talked to her, one of the things that I understood, she, she seems very, very engaged with the young people there, very engaged. They already have, each, each grade level has an ambassador. And so, they already have a system in place, and so she could very easily find two students that she could recommend. And that, and, and we want to leave it at her, at that principal's discretion, because that is a homegrown high school, regardless of where they're from.
Now, what if it's more than two that's outside of the East Point that wants to be a part of this program? Because sometimes you can have more people that's in the city that want to participate. I mean, you might have more people outside the city that might want, you know, children that might want to participate, and they're not ex officio.
I think that's where we hope that what we are doing here will inspire them to go to their cities, go to their city council, and say, "I think you need to have this." Because that's what we're seeing happening in all these other communities all around the state, which is where, whether it's a mayor or whether it's city council, they are taking the initiative to say, "I want something for my young people to be involved in civics and government. I want something for my young people to understand investing in their community." So, it's not to exclude them, but it's to ensure that those who are here have the opportunity. Right now, we have nothing. Right now, we have nothing. So, we may not be able to grab every single one, but we have to start somewhere. And this is a good starting point, and hopefully, it would inspire those young people who are from the outside to go back to their cities, get engaged, go to their city council meeting, and say, "I want you to have this." And look at the city of East Point, they have it.
Well, I'm so, you ain't got to convince me. I'm just trying to figure out, I'm all about kids.
Madam Mayor, I think I said a couple weeks ago when this first came out, that it was an incredible idea, beautiful idea. And we need to be helping the kids at the school. And the only reason I had made that proposal, Madam Mayor, is that, you know, I guess my heart came out to all the people, all the kids that are in a school. And I can underst, and I can underst, I can understand your conversation about being a commission. Maybe we should have changed the word commission to something else, and we wouldn't be bogged down with saying, "You have to be like other commissions," but, but I support your idea. And I would hope the audience understands that when we, when we're up here and we argue or disagree and, and discuss something, doesn't mean that we're going to go out in the parking lot and break each other's knees with a baseball bat.
I hope not.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that, because she, she provides me with choc, she provides me with chocolate all the time, so. I'm fine with that. So, Madam Mayor, I withdraw my motion to, I'll make the word resident.
Okay. I don't, like, I agree with the councilwoman. I don't think we should be too long on making sure that kids are educated in local government, and I think we spent too long on this. So, you all want to make a motion, please?
I would like to make a motion to introduce and give first reading to ordinance number 23-1232, to amend Chapter 2, Administration, Article 5, Boards and Commissions, creating a new Division 10, Teen Advisory Commission of the ordinances of the city of East Point.
Second.
Motion to support, please.
Sure, I did, I did have additional que, I thought we were moving on to the next thing after the residency, and I would, is in favor of staying without residents. But just a couple other questions, like, let's see, what was it? First one, I guess for the, the budget, well, yeah, I guess the, the budget part, what would be an example, you think, of something that they would need a budget for? I guess this is where, and I think Mr. Albright sort of filled it in with his change, that they'd have a city, city management liaison, like the rest of the commissions. And that's what I was saying, where like, you know, they'll open the building, have their meetings over here, do that sort of thing. What, what's like an example of something they would need, like, a budget for?
Well, this'll get into my history a little bit, but as an advocate for young people, I'll put it that way. I can't tell you an event that you can have for teens in particular, where you don't provide them with some sort of sustenance. So, just out the gate alone, after a meeting, having pizza and something to drink for the teens, you would want some type of budget to provide for that. But that notwithstanding, I do not put it beyond these young people. I have, I have seen, over many years, some amazing minds in young people between the ages of 13 and 18, and the concepts that they can come up with, and the things that they can invent and create, the social movements that they can make. And so, I think if they come up with an amazing concept, whether it's to have a parade, whether it's to do a drive. We had a young man here a couple weeks ago, who came up with the idea to put a story walk in the park. Whatever it is, they will come up with it, they will also come up with a budget to fund it, and then bring that budget proposal to city council. But I don't, I don't want to limit to say what that would be, because these are amazing minds, and you're talking about nine to 11 different amazing minds that will come and say, "This is what I want." And I can't wait to hear their voices, so I don't, I don't want to limit that.
What's the budget that we have on the other commissions? Because that, we do need, we do need to have an amount, because we, and we need to teach the kids how to work within that budget.
Yes.
Because that's going to teach them how to, might be, manage money. So, what's the amount in other commissions? Isn't it about $1,500?
Actually, last year, I believe it was $2,500 for beautification, and then also for ACDC, so Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission.
We should.
That, that can certainly be something when we get into the budget workshops, and we go into approving the budget for the commissions, that building, the budget, whatever council's comfortable adding in, specific to the teen, teen commission, would be an appropriate time to kind of decide, based on the budget figures, what you'd be most comfortable adding.
And I think, yeah, it's great if, yeah, if the commission members come, come to us and give a present, yeah, I guess, like last meeting, like you said, that was great, and ask us for something. I guess I was just, initially, just again... I guess I was just, initially, just against the like 2,000, kinda like the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission and Beautification Commission gets just for like whatever they decide at that point. So, you're just though expecting them to come forward, they're gonna pitch like an idea, maybe like, you know, parks, you know, we've talked about the water feature at Kennedy, so they'd pitch that and then we discuss it. That's, that's what you're foreseeing?
Yes, but I, I think as well, even if they had, let's say we designate them $2,500, based off of how this is written, they would still have to come before council in order to get that approved. So, it's not as though they can just say at a meeting, we're gonna spend our whole budget of $2,500 on a pizza party at East Point High School and go next week and do it. They would be bringing to, to the council whatever their proposal is. And that's, again, another learning opportunity, another teachable moment, for them to learn how to put it together, how to present it, and how to argue it.
And I, I think a couple other ideas from looking at other commissions, I think we need to do like a release like indemnity sort of thing. I think like Sterling Heights had, had a form just for the commission. And then were we having them just fill out the regular application like everyone else does?
Yeah, they would go through the same process that all of our other boards and commissions with the exception that they would have to submit a resume and a letter of interest.
Okay.
So, they actually have a little more of a rigorous process.
And then with the July to, so July to June term, so I guess we're expecting basically to hopefully appoint a group at the end of the school year, you know, which is coming up, and then they would serve from, yeah, basically the end of that school year to the next school year. So, it'd be like the end of freshman year would be the youngest until graduating, basically, then?
Ostensibly, it could even be incoming freshmen because the age is 13 to 18, so if they have graduated eighth grade and they're going into high school. And I'll say that because, again, East Point High is housing the whole eighth grade class. And while they're on a separate floor, they're still housed at East Point High. So, if we have East Point residents in the eighth grade who are matriculating into the ninth grade and they wanted to apply for this council and they meet the residency and age requirements, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't see that as a barrier to come online.
Okay.
All set? Councilman?
Oh.
Okay. We have motion and support?
One question, just, if the kids apply, that's with the assumption that they have their parents okay, or do we, should we have written proof that the parents are okay with that?
So, I think that's what Mr. DeMonico was saying, too. We, we could ask administration to put together a permission that they would also have to sign.
Okay.
And I, I have no problem with that. And there are examples. Actually, I believe Mr. Albright provided us with an example, but I also have some examples from some other communities of a, a form that the parents just have to sign to say they agree that their child can participate.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this? We got motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cobbunice?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Next item is the discussion and motion to reestablish the Senior Citizen Advisory Commission. This was brought up by councilmember, councilwoman Cobbunice.
Yes, ma'am. So, Madam Mayor, I'd like to motion to reestablish the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission and further direct the city attorney to draft an amended ordinance to review, for review and approval at the next city council meeting.
Support.
Motion and support? No. Call the roll.
Oh, well, no, wait, I had, I did have discussion.
I thought I waited.
Well, so, I think, I, I guess first question is, we, I mean, I think it's, it's already established, the, right now, the mayor needs to appoint everybody and we just haven't appointed anyone. We talked about it a couple of years ago. And I guess my opinion is it should stay a mayoral-appointed commission. And I, I wouldn't be in favor of this and I guess reducing the members and all that if going into these changes. I think we should just stay, stay as it is and if, I guess it's up to you to point some folks, Mayor. And I guess that's, that's at least my, my opinion.
Yeah, so why did you take that part out, councilwoman?
So, my, first of all, that was the first thing that I, that I went for. Actually, if you look in at what I had under membership, the only thing that I did change was to make it five members as opposed to 11. The reason for that was that we seem to have a hard time with all of our boards and commissions being able to staff them. And so, if you lower the number, then you have a better chance of being able to have a quorum and, and fully meet, then be able to meet. With respect to, and I'm trying to see, yeah, so under B, members of the commission shall be appointed by the majority of council, all of our, the, many of our, not all, many of our other boards and commissions, their applications come before this body, same with the one we just finished talking about, Teen Advisory Commission. And so, again, in keeping with what we have typically done, which is have the applications come and members of this body put the name forth, that was the reason for that. Not to take anything away from the mayor, if you would like to appoint them all, I have no issue with that. But it was just to be in keeping with the majority of how we appoint to our other boards and commissions.
We got motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cobbunice?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
No.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Moving right along, let me see. Is payroll and bills, council?
Mayor, I'll motion we pay the bills in the amount of $2,542,038.2.
Second.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobbunice?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yep.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Second hearing of the public is now open.
Mary Hall Rayford, again. As I said before, the teen advisory issue was a great idea. I love the concept. And as I was listening to some of the comments, there's one realistic way to resolve the residency issue, change the term from commission to panel or council. Don't really know, other than parks, if there's another commission that actually has a budget. So, if we're gonna be consistent with regard to commissions, if that's what you wanna call it, then it should be consistent across the board. We always have exceptions to rules and so it's pretty much, you know, anticipated. So, the other thing I wanted to mention is, this is Holy Week and I would hope that people really take time to reflect on behaviors, attitudes, who it is we're supposed to be representing, and have a great holiday. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This was heck of a meeting. Whole lot of things were discussed. And I'm glad they were discussed, but I tell you, I've got a lot of things that need to be discussed too. And just get some answers on plenty of it. Let me see, I love it right here, you got commissions? Commissions, created a new division, discussion, senior citizen advisatory, you know, you're, all this stuff, now more or less it's coming new, what about the old? And that's what I'm trying to really discuss right now too, about the city per se of making something out of nothing. Right now, we've got to say, we got, they're getting to, I'm getting, just reverting back to the parks, real quick. Things that should've been done, right now, we're talking about a splash pad in two years. Give me a break. I know the bad thing about this, all this money for a splash pad, we took a beautiful X amount of million-dollar pool because we couldn't support. Now, we're gonna get a splash pad, in five years it'd be done and we put all this money into it again. I want, I want the kids themselves per se to utilize our parks, but the splash pad? Come on. Honest, I'm serious. These kids are gonna run around, they're gonna get wet, they're gonna put mud on it and rest of stuff, it's gonna get messed up. Biggest thing, who's gonna maintain that? How much money are you gonna put aside each year for the city to maintain a splash pad? Honest, I'm saying, the, the council and everybody has some great ideas, but coming back and thinking about it, and excuse me for saying this, especially the advisatory for the teens, that's not right. It's a commission, make it a panel, make it anything you want. The monies, the other commissions don't get this kind of money. They don't get this money. I love the idea of, of the high school of kids and rest of them. I think it's a great idea. Now, you're gonna give them an allowance? There's something wrong with this. I mean, you can stand there and say, you think it's right? What about the other commissions that doesn't get anything? And, and especially when it comes to commissions, this one I wanna really rip just for heck of it. I'm on the zoning board of appeals. We've had one meeting in two years, a board. Ours is, is theory, it's, it's law. Now, you got these commissions and the same thing. I go and look at them, it comes up in front of the board. All this time that we waste of indecisions, which is great because the board says yes or no, and you're gonna have a teen commission right now too? I love it when you're putting back the city residents. Lot of good ideas come across you here tonight, but maybe as I say, I wish some more of these people could really get up and talk about some of these things because it's unbelievable. You people have some great ideas too, but there's a lot of residents out here right now. Little typical example, I'll just let this go, this'll be my last thing. I met with some gentlemen right out in the parking lot at our last meeting, and you know what they told me? The reason they don't get up here anymore is because they feel intimidated. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, council and mayor.
Can you talk closer to the mic, ma'am?
Yes. Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Ronnie Gammarberry and I just wanna speak on in regards to the Teens Advisory Commission. Great idea, but I think for the budgeting, I think that it should just have them do fundraisers to have their money, to help them to know how to bring in money to suffice for whatever things that they're gonna, ideas that they have or wanna do within the city. Also, in regards to the fire department, please put the money into the fire. Love them. I just recently had a, my daughter had seizure. I didn't know what I was gonna do. I called 911 and I'm like, East Point normally he'd be here in a mix, in minutes. Missed dark hang. I'm like, where, East Point Police Department, the EMS, they normally come. They are excellent in our city. Whatever you all can do with the budget, please. I thought my daughter was gonna die that day because they wasn't on spot when I really needed them. Excellent, get the, get the funds that they need to stay within the city of East Point, please. Whatever y'all can do for them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else at this time?
Larry Edwards, East Point residents. It's sad to say, I have to start off with saying, all history is a current event. You know, it's comparable with genealogy. Your genealogy, you know, it'll tell you, your race will tell you how you look, but your ethnicity and your nationality will tell you who you are. And with history, it, we can, we can look at the past and we can look at even the present of, of what history has dealt us. We are supposed to do better. It says, a statement say, when you know better, you're supposed to do better. But that's really almost a myth in a lot of situations. We've been coming here for some time now with the finger pointing, with a lot of animosity. But me being a history student and everything, I can remember a guy by the name of Judge Carl Currie, I think is the name, the third, was a total nutcase. Nothing was said. I ask people, I talk to people about this crazy, this maniac, and, oh, that's just Carl. Oh, it's no big deal. Nothing to it. Turned heads. Not, but then when other situations come by, come about with, depending on who it is and what have you, we would go to the extent to pull up job records, just private citizens. We would go to the extent to point fingers to go to all kind of dirt pulled up on people and what have you. When this guy was causing, was causing people to lose their livelihoods by pay or stay, go to jail for 30 days, 60 days, 90 days without being with the option of paying on installments or however to make arrangements for paying and everything. And even the federal, the federal level got involved in it and gave him a slap on the hand and told him to, that that was illegal, you can't do that and what have you, still continue to do it. Where, where's, where's, where was all the outburst and all the outlash about that and everything? It was none. The guy was able to have almost completed his total 12 years and everything and also with nobody saying nothing, turning a head, just overlooking everything. But I'd also like to bring up, that I would like to have a public, a public clarity on the lighting situation for the Street of Fairlane, Fairlane Court before, before my, I address it or, or before I question it or address it any further. Amen, all right.
You can talk to our administration after the meeting with that information. Anyone else who'd like to speak at this time? Say none. Second hearing of the public is now closed. Want some mayor and council reports, starting with Councilman DeMonico?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I guess I'd say we all had a pretty busy month with the school district, all of us here, city admin, city council, everybody, kinda saw everyone either at the district update they had or the, I was at the band showcase, which was pretty cool. And for March's Reading Month, I know, I think maybe everybody read some books to kids. I was able to after the snow, you know, I had a snow day on my first one, but then read to some kindergarten classes. Exciting, they have lots of questions and some of them were guessing the end of the books and stuff, which is no fun for everyone else, I guess. But, and if you've ever read the Lorax, one of them, there's a lot of trees in the middle chopped down, you know, not to break the story for you, but only one was cut down on one page. And this, one of them gasped like, huh, and I'm like, uh-oh. Couple pages later, all the trees are gonna be gone. It was a pretty fun reading to them. Council, maybe get ready, the planning commission is looking at the zoning ordinance on Thursday, so there's a lot to read, so get prepared for that on an upcoming agenda. And then, as we talked earlier, the Beautification Commission's doing their cleanup and eat-up. We'll go back to the eat-up part now that, you know, we're a little further out of the pandemic here. Come out, pick up some litter with us and then eat. We'll do that, as we said, on Earth Day, April 22nd, 11:00 PM. Meet us at the like northeast corner of Ait and Grashit, you'll see a bunch of people there, set up. Usually, we can get, you know, 50, yeah, like 50 bags of garbage thrown out and there's plenty of work for everyone. Bring as many people as you can, help out the Beautification Commission if you can. A couple just things in the news, I guess, is a lot of people probably saw, today we see, you know, the law in our country and society applies to everybody. Saw that in New York today. Unfortunate, you know, previous president's been charged with crimes, which shows, you know, not even the president is above the law. And I think to me at least, that's an, an ideal in our society. In more positive news, the new Artemis Moon mission is very exciting. In more positive news, the new Artemis Moon mission is very exciting. I'm a huge fan of NASA, and one of the astronauts, Christina Koch, she's from Michigan, so we've got a Michigander going up on the first moon mission in 50-plus years, so I'll be watching that closely, it's very exciting. Actually, one's a Canadian also, so it'd be three Americans and a Canadian, so check that out if you haven't really read about that yet. And then, I've got some comments on, we've talked a lot about, like, what there is to do in the community, and I think, I mean, separate, separate from, obviously, we're talking about the commission earlier, which is one additional thing to do in the committee, but not, not related to that, just other things people have come to hearing of the public, said we've got nothing to do in the community, but that is just not true. We have a lot, it's plain wrong, between what's directly in the city and the metropolitan area, we've got a ton to do. You know, of course, we live in a metro area, no city that's not the urban center will have everything, you know, we've got the DIA, Detroit History Museum, Detroit Zoo, Motown Museum, Charles H. Wright Museum, Scarab Club, this is just a few things, you know, just from a few minutes earlier, putting some comments together. We've got all kinds of venues to watch professional sports, takes your kids out to there, or, you know, like St. Andrews Hall, the Opera House, the Film, or the Fox for things like plays or other things like that. Those, of course, are not in the city, but we're, you know, we're not going to have the next Little Caesar's Arena in East Point, obviously. We've got the eight parks, you know, in the city, there's Getz Park, Rain, Fairlane, Shamrock, and Roxana, and then the three bigger ones, Memorial, Spindler Kennedy, there's all kinds of things to do there, you know, we've, of course, talked about the baseball and softball, but we've got pickleball, basketball, soccer, volleyball, tennis, skateboard, you know, we've got the sled hill, you could play disc golf, walk, run, you know, ride your bike, play on playground equipment, there's leagues for various sports through RARE, all kinds of other programming through RARE, you can reserve a gazebo and just have your family hang out at the park. We've got all kinds of things to do. Then there's county and state parks nearby, of course. We've got an ice rink just a few feet outside of the city in St. Clair Shores. We've got the hill in our city that other cities don't have, there's bowling alleys north, northwest, east of us, all kinds of different things. The library, library's got a ton of programming for kids and adults, you know, if you've ever done trivia with Sandy Baker. And a lot of restaurants, we've got like 14 different pizza places, I think, alone, but like 60 restaurants in the city. All kinds of things to do with kids. That's it. But then I think, one more item is, I just think, it seems we've kind of lost something here in East Point. We've lost what it means to be a city council. The city council, which of course includes the mayor, the five of us, it's responsible for policy, and wisely, the founders of our state and nation made the legislative, legislative bodies of many people, not just one. There's no legislative body of one. In East Point, the five of us need to work together to create the best policy. One person does not write in policy. So the intention's to have a discussion before we pass a policy. Comment or question on a policy does not indicate the policy proposal's a bad idea. In fact, I would suggest it means the opposite, we're trying to improve it. So, I mean, I've never brought something forward that other people didn't have questions and vice versa, so I just hope that we can, going forward, instead of feeling attacked or something, we're trying to improve things here, you know, and we also should not be, we should not be a body that rubber stamps what the city administration proposes. There's three co-equal branches of government, we're one of them, and a proposal that's not fully vetted, is implemented well, and does not meet our expected outcome, we only have ourselves to blame then. That's why we ask questions of city management, department heads upfront, you know, and we're also responsible for the budget. So when there's a question about a million dollar fire truck, or a budget for a commission, that's maybe in the hundreds or thousands of dollars, like we talked to school board members, other members of the community, before putting on an agenda item can be a good idea, too. To do none of these things and then be irritated when one other member asks something in our legislative body, you know, to suggest a change is missing the point of being a council member, and shirking responsibility as a lawmaker. So, that's all I had. Sorry it was a little lengthy today, Madam Mayor. I did read, wrote some-
You wrote a two-page letter.
I did, yep, just, just, just for you and everyone, I guess, yeah.
You have to get it out. You have to get it out. I'm glad you got it out. Well, we always want you to, well, everybody on council to speak their mind and discuss things, because that's what we're here for, you know, to discuss or have questions, because that helps us better serve you all, and when I'm up here, I might have a idea or a decision already made, but then when I come with you all, and you come with your ideas, it changes mine, my perspective, because your experiences and backgrounds help me to make a better decision. So going to Councilman Baker.
Thank you.
One page.
Oh, it's not going to even be a page. So, I believe it was the last meeting or the meeting prior, I offered or issued a challenge or, I don't want to say challenge, but just ask people to share positive experiences, positive feedbacks, because there's never a shortage of negativity. So I'm going to start off by talking about the event that we just had at the high school, where they highlighted people in the community, school board, city council, police, fire, I believe, I don't want to leave anybody out, but it was just good, the way the superintendent, the energy that she put into it, and just acknowledging the people that contribute in some shape, form, or fashion to our city. And so I just thought that that was good, and it's not that people served to get the pat on the back, but sometimes it's just very encouraging to know that people notice the work that you're trying to put in. And so I still extend that same offer to everybody, if you have a positive experience, share it, it's good, let it be contagious, issue kindness, respect, and love to all people. If we disagree, let's try to do so without being disagreeable, but if it happens, we can just get it together and come back and meet up again and try to do better the next time. So that's all I got.
Thank you.
Good point.
Councilman Curly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just two quick things. In regards to our meeting tonight, I, my opinion, I thought it was an exercise in democracy and that we agree to disagree, and when I brought up my idea about only having, open to the teen that anybody can qualify, because I felt in my heart that was good, but we had a long discussion, we had some good, good remarks from the council lady, and I said, okay, my motion's not going to go anywhere, so it's called compromise. I could have voted no, to be stubborn, but I didn't. I support the whole idea that she brought off to begin with, and I had a variable opinion. So I'm leaving this council tonight, encourage that we can agree to disagree, and I would hope those of you who are less left in the audience would agree that, hey, okay, they agreed, and it came down to an agreement. The other thing, have nothing to do with politics, but those who really love our city, and if you had not been over to the post office, walked into the door, and looked up to your right, up on the ceiling, is a mural painted in 1939, when the post office first opened. I don't know how long that post office is going to be there, it's been there a long time. There's always been discussion about, well, East Point ought to merge with Roseville, because Roseville has everything. You can get your passport, you can get everything. Well, but look at that mural, because I don't think, if they tear it down, because it's painted on the wall, I don't think it can be saved. So if you like art, and you want to reminisce, 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 yeah, I know, reminisce about what our city was like, this is a guy that, 1939, got up on a ladder and painted this. So you might want to take a picture, and if you have relatives someplace else, saying, this is part of our community. It was painted when we were halfway. So that's all, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. You were here when it was called halfway?
[laughing]
I was asking a question. You were here when it was called halfway?
I was here, yeah.
You was here?
Of course, I'm, I'm an old man.
Wow. Well, a lot, man. Yeah. Halfway, wow. It was called halfway, and then it was called East Detroit?
East Detroit, and then-
It was something, it was called something else before halfway, though.
And it's Aaron Township?
Yep. Okay, council?
I have a sheet, no. I do, I, I think it's a left-handed thing, that we keep our notes, so don't be mad at us. First of all, I just want to say congratulations to Michael, our new court administrator. He did an excellent job previously as our HR manager, and is clearly well-loved and respected at the 38th District Court, so it was an honor to go and see him be sworn in, and I'm so happy for Judge Galen and all the staff over there. Also, I want to say congratulations to our three firefighters and new fire chief on their promotions this week. We're just really excited for their promotions, and then for the re-establishment of having a fire chief again. I also want to say congratulations to Superintendent Gibson and the entire East Point School District on their successful district gathering to celebrate the staff and community leaders last Friday. And then, as always, and some of this was kind of highlighted by Councilman DeMonico, but our library does offer some great resources, and a couple of things that they have coming up that he didn't mention were, they are going to have a Fago presentation with author, author Joe Grimm on April 20th, as well as a DIA, which is close to my heart, presentation of From Camelot to Kent State Pop Art Exhibition on April 27th. And I went to a couple of presentations they had last month, they were awesome. They did a women in engineering, they also did one on the Underground Railroad, excellent, excellent presentation, so please go and check those out. And finally, I'll conclude my statements with saying, seek the peace and prosperity of the city, to which you've been called, and pray to the Lord for it, because if it prospers, you will too.
Okay, I don't have, I don't have my stuff written out, so, but I do want to say happy birthday to my niece Amber. Her birthday was on April Fool's Day, and my only nephew Sebastian, his birthday was three days prior to hers. And so I'm publicly saying happy birthday, so when they get older and grown, they can go back to YouTube, and I got, you know, I get kudos as an aunt later on. Also, I want to thank everyone that came out tonight, some people had to leave. Want to thank our fire department and our police department for all the hard work they do, and also the staff, our new staff that has came aboard, I want to say welcome to the family. I also want to, I wasn't, I wasn't there, but I also want to give a shout out to all the new businesses. I know we just had one ribbon cutting, I wasn't able to be there, I know I was there in spirit, but the new business Boss Baby that came to the city of East Point, and then we have a new Indian food restaurant on Nine Mile, I haven't tried it yet, because the mayor is on a whole different type of diet right now, juicing right now, but then, when I get out of that season, I'll be trying that. So we have a lot of new businesses that's coming to the city of East Point, and let's support them. If you see it, just stop by, get a menu, see what's going on. I think they did a citywide mailing, so people can get 30% off at the Indian food restaurant, and Boss Baby is a, is a new daycare, I believe, and I'm trying to get her, she also owns a boutique as well, so she has one, I believe, at Lakeside Mall and one downtown Detroit, and she is also, her, her husband is also in pastoring as well, so, and I'm trying to get her to bring a boutique here, so Boss Baby can have, our kids can have some clothes, too. So I want to give a shout out to all the businesses that I don't know about, but we want to make sure that we support our, our local businesses. Also, Easter Sunday is coming up, I want to invite everyone at home that's looking at the mayor, and everyone in the audience, to celebrate Easter with the mayor. I go IATM Rama International Church, right on Kelly Road, by Eight Mile, and you can come out and celebrate and worship God with your mayor. A lot of people don't do that, so come and worship God and Jesus and the things that they have done for us to be here today. So you are invited to our 12 o'clock service, you can all come out, but again, it is Easter Sunday, I don't know what your religion or belief is, but if it is equal to what Easter is about, let's, it's a time to be with family and friends, and you know, let's, let's remember, you know, what it's about, what it's really about. I know we like to eat food and dress up and things like that, but let's get down to what it's really about, and let's value that. I'm about to get out of here. Oh, also, I want to thank our city manager for all the hard work, and our assistant city manager, and all our administration for all the hard work they have been doing to get some things done in the city. I know our councilman said, you know, as a legislative body, you know, we create the laws, but they do the research, and they do a lot of things behind the scenes to help us create laws and do the research of so many other cities and seeing how they implement laws and what they're doing to help us better serve you. So I want to make sure we always give homage to those behind the scenes that don't have the titles and things like that to help us be a better service to you. So I said that to say, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Hold on. Second.
Motion and support, please call the roll. I have a second. Councilmember Curly? Okay. Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Kamunis?
Absolutely.
Mean adjourn.
Oh, I didn't know you were lefty, too. Oh, see? We can't help but take it.